I'd like to call to order the committee as a whole for Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is rule call. Turn that over to our city administrator, Chad Breckland.
Good evening, everyone. Alder Allen is absent with excuse. Alder Aratafrada?
Here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Maldonado is also absent with excuse, as is Mayor Richardson. Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
And Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes, the February 23rd, 2022 draft minutes.
A move of approval?
Approval made by Alder Herbst and seconded by Alder, Julia, Alder Aratafrada. Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. Do we have anybody registered for public appearances for non-agenda items?
Yes, we do.
All right, we have no one registered. Moving on to item six, agenda items. First item up is naming of parks update, and Director of Parks, Scott Endall, you will present this evening?
I will.
All right, very good. You have the floor.
Good evening, all. Certainly, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the group for the ability to zoom in from home for the presentation. It's truly appreciated and very helpful. I guess what I would do in the interest of, and understanding that you had a pretty late meeting last night, I could certainly make the presentation a couple of different ways. I could, you know, certainly review the policy real quickly, or certainly open it up to questions right away. At this point, I do want to, you know, apologize, and I did send to you a late correspondence early today memo regarding additional information. I did place a copy on the Alders, on the table there, so I apologize for that late submittal, but wanted to provide some additional information. So I think with that, I'll defer to, you know, the method you'd like me to present here.
Okay, I think an overview of the guidelines, and then we'll ask questions afterwards. Yeah.
That sounds fine.
And by the way, we do have your memo. It is sitting in front of us as well, so.
Thank you kindly. Maybe just a quick history lesson before I get into the proposal. This resolution was approved in December of 2013, and the mayor at the time was Sean Pfaff. The city administrator was Tony Roach. And actually, the park commission members were, Mayor Richardson was one of the members, and Jason Gonzalez was another member of the park commission at the time. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a history on that, and maybe just a quick overview of the policy that was approved. The purpose of the policy was to establish standard procedures and guidelines for the naming of public park and open space land owned and operated by the City of Pittsburgh. One of the objectives was to provide name identification for individual parks, park areas, or park facilities. The authorization component of the policy is the park commission shall be responsible for recommending to the common council the naming or change in the name of an assigned public park. A couple of the objective selection criteria. The names submitted for consideration should provide some form of individual identity in relation to the following: geographical location of the facility, outstanding feature of the facility, a commonly recognized historical event or group, organization, and adjoining subdivision to honor a person or group, or to show gratitude to an individual. And actually, they, within the policy, there's some additional criteria which is very helpful. There is two processes identified. One of them is to, a naming process for an existing unnamed facility, and then also for a new facility. And it does call for policy review periodically, and I guess I would suggest that this is a good policy review opportunity. In regards to the memo that I provided you, it's really, as an update, as you review through there, we have no less than 17 different public park spaces that are in need of a name. So certainly, any suggestions on how you may, or how the council may suggest to achieve that, along with, I know one of the thoughts that staff has is similar to naming of streets when a development comes in, the idea of potentially the developer suggesting park names for their public park dedication. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Yes, go ahead, Alder Aratafrada.
Yeah, so, thank you, Scott, for the presentation. So this is something that I wanted to bring forward, and I asked Scott to follow up with you, Randy, about introducing this to the rest of the council, because, you know, there are a lot of parks that they need naming, and I think I mentioned to you in several previous meetings that we discuss in parks, that we need your input, you know? If you have any input for some naming of the new park, you should send those input to Park Commission. And also because I think it's good to revise this policy that is almost 10 years old, and then maybe convert this policy in an ordinance for the city, because we don't have an ordinance about naming parks, we have a policy. So the idea is to gather your feedback. What do you think about this policy? Do you think that it needs some revision, modification, updates, whatever you name it? And then, so everyone understand, you know, for the naming of the, we have a couple of new parks underway, what should be the criteria to naming those parks? So that one was the purpose of this, you know, presentation. So, and I would like to know, you know, your feedback, and what do you think about converting this policy in ordinance, and if we need to make some changes before we do that.
Thank you. Questions, further discussion? Yes, Alder Herbst.
Scott, I assume, you know, we have some, at least one joint park, you know, in my neighborhood, Jamestown Heagle, and I assume that would be off the plate, you know, because otherwise we'd be dealing with Madison, so those ones, you know, are off the table. Can I, would I be correct?
I would, you know, I would say that for sure, they're certainly off the table, but, you know, to reserve, to reserve the right, certainly we'd want to follow up and find out why it was named that name, and certainly if we would like to consider or reconsider, you know, consider a new name, we certainly could do that, but, yeah, I would agree that if a park is named, it really should remain that name.
Yes, Alder Aratafrada.
Thank you. Scott, do we have, do you have like a database that, if we want to do some research, say why certain parks in our city were named under, you know, like, we know that McKee was, you know, because the McKee family donated that to the land, but, the land to the city, but, if we want to, do you have that database with all of the parks, the current names, why they're named like that?
I do have files on each of the names, Julia, and I could certainly run through the files and try to determine, you know, how they came up with the name, but I would say typically that it, you know, it's a couple of different categories. It's the street where it's located, it was the, you know, the name of the development, and as you related to, you know, McKee, they donated the land, same thing with McGaw. So I could find, you know, rationale for each of the individual parks potentially in the files for that specific park.
Okay. I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
And the other question is, you know, there is, I don't know, when, 10 years ago, when they put together this policy, they also, under the naming process, did they create like a checklist or an application form? If some, you know, if some neighbor want to say, hey, I want to name this park, how do are the process? You know, there is a form, it's a cost, you know what I mean? Do we have that?
We don't really have a form, if you would, Julia. Certainly, I would, you know, people would inquire, and then I would share this policy with them, and we'd walk through the criteria to make sure that, you know, the criteria of the name would meet the policy, you know, the policy standards or the selection criteria, if you would. But no formal form or anything of that nature.
Has, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We kept, and actually, that display in front, it kind of indicates that, you know, those are all the, wow, thank you, Scott. All of those green and lightly covered, are lightly green, the different shades of green are all public, are all public lands within these developments. And certainly, there's, you know, there's greenways and natural areas and those kinds of things, so that just kind of gives you an indication of the different spaces that are still in need of names. And, you know, I think that, you know, the idea to get it started, you know, I could reach out to the developer, if you would, and say, hey, you know, we've got these spaces, do you have any suggested names for these spaces, just to, you know, try to get the goal accomplished, to get all of these areas, all of these areas named?
Has this conversation come before the Parks Committee at this point?
Yeah, it's going to be part of the Parks and, update of the parks, yeah. We discuss every meeting about naming some park, but we haven't, we haven't shown this policy to the parks. They know about this policy, but we haven't talked publicly about that.
Okay. The policy itself hasn't been discussed yet?
No, but they have a copy of the policy.
Sure.
You know, and any other kind of suggestions or ideas on how we might accomplish this would be, you know, if not tonight, you know, if you think of something, let me know, and we can, I can certainly try and implement that.
Alder Wheeler, go ahead.
I just have one comment. Under selection criteria, E, number one, I think a major donation needs to be defined a little bit better, because what is a major donation? I mean, what does that mean when we're talking about a park?
Or what do you see, like, maybe a percentage of, is a park, this is a crazy idea. Suppose a park costs Bill $5 million, so, and someone come with a $50,000 check of a naming, it's like, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? Like, it's not the same that someone come with a half a million dollar check, you know what I mean? So, kind of like...
Yeah, I don't know the cost of a lot of that equipment, so I mean, I don't know if it should be 50% or 70%.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's probably so.
No, you know, because we have that discussion in parks, because we have an inclusive program. One of the mayor donors, they want to have some naming consideration, and then this is why they start everything, because we start saying, what are the, that the city has something right into, how do we do this, you know? And I agree with you, what is the correct amount, you know what I mean? So this is why everything started, because we, possibly, the inclusive program is going to have one of the donors requesting to have a naming. So this is what I say, this is what is, what is the criteria, you know? What is, if you contribute to X amount of money, how, this is enough for the naming or no, you know? So I, yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
So at this point, it's been very subjective to what...
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't make, we discussed a park, but we never made a formal decision about what to do with this.
Okay. Yes, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thanks. Scott, have you done any, so do other cities have this as an official ordinance, or is it typically similar to this where it's a resolution? Or, do you have any research about any other similar size municipalities?
Well, and what I did, and when I look back at the file, when I, what I did is I reached out to other communities that had similar policies. I don't recall now if they were actually resolutions or just, you know, park naming policy that I, you know, took information from and kind of recreated it for this policy.
I, can I...
Yes, go ahead, Alder.
When I did some research about naming and stuff, you know, when we talk about, when we're going through the other naming, I also, I saw in some municipality, I don't remember the names, but here, I was looking in Wisconsin, some of them, they have this in an ordinance. They are, you know, so they are more ordinance than policy. This is how I found this, naming of park and the ordinances.
So from your research, you think they're ordinance?
Yeah. So this is what I am bringing this forward to you to determine, what do you think that maybe we should, you know, this park should be as an ordinance, and this is what I asked Scott, why the city 10 years ago considered, they did this instead of doing an ordinance, you know what I mean? But he wasn't, you were here, isn't he, 10 years ago?
Oh, yeah, I've been...
Oh, yeah, okay.
I've been here for a while.
But you remember why the city didn't, you know...
You know, I don't remember per se, and I, like I said, I went back and I looked at it, and I couldn't, I couldn't determine what was the impetus behind it, but certainly, I think it is, you know, it certainly is something that we need to, you know, we need to, we need to get taken care of, that's for sure.
Yes, city administrator, Chad Breckland, go ahead.
I think for the council's consideration, whether it remain in a policy form or ordinance form, certainly that's your call based on your preference level. I think one advantage of leaving in a policy form does allow for more flexibility, allows things to be updated a bit more quickly, and obviously, when you put things into ordinance, there are publication requirements and a bit more involved processes. Again, neither one is perhaps necessarily any better than the other as far as codifying something, but it just depends on truly, you know, how you best feel it would be to codify it.
Can I follow up with that?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, the flexibility, but also when you're looking at the city, naming is a policy, you don't find it in the ordinance, you don't find that you need to go to the website and try to find this thing on the website. We didn't find in the web, it's not in the website, we, you know, I think Scott, you know, he has this in his file, but I don't know, you know what I mean? So that one is the only thing that, you know...
I would think that's something we could add, though, under parks somewhere on the website, I mean...
Yeah, no, that's, it's an excellent point, it's definitely fair, and I think as we continue to provide enhancements to the website based upon feedback, and ultimately, you know, I think it's a couple, two, three years for a full rebuild, so to speak, but perhaps as we identify more and more of these policies that the city has and utilizes, there could potentially be a section, much like ordinances, that would be on our website that would state city policies, and perhaps broken down by department could be an option as well, so that it would be much more easily locatable by the public.
Yes, Alder, go ahead.
Just as a reference point, when we've been discussing the tree protection ordinance in tree advisory, and we've definitely been looking at other ordinances in similar communities, and there are some, we're going to intentionally make references to policy documents that exist, rather than including every single thing in the ordinance, just for, it's the streamlined nature of it, so that you can refer back to the documents, the policy document is much easier to update, and there's no reason to have to go back and update a definition if something changes, you know, that's just like over the top. But, like, I wonder if there's a possibility of, I wonder if anyone has kind of like a streamlined ordinance, that there's clarity that there is an ordinance, or like a very small ordinance that then refers to like a more detailed policy document, just so it's easy on the books that we know that there's something that exists in the city. I don't know if that's something that's typically done or not, I haven't, I haven't read through all the ordinances, so I don't know, maybe Valerie could weigh in, if maybe that's overkill or something, but, yeah, I do like the flexibility, but it might be worth codifying into the ordinance that something like this does exist and that we care about it.
Or maybe we just use this policy and enhance upon it as well, I mean, that's certainly an option as well. I mean, you spoke of percentages, I mean, it's certainly something that could be added.
Is the, is this something that the Parks Commission would be interested in working on, like, an update to this, and then bring it to council back for like, for like more detailed discussion? Is that something that could be on the agenda? I know the Parks and Open Space Plan is kind of more of a priority, I would think, at this point, but...
Yeah, that's a good question. Scott, is that something that you can address?
Certainly, we can, we could, to Julia's point, we can update the Park Commission on the policy and take some time to take a look through it. How does the group feel about the idea of, you know, similar to the naming of streets for new developments, that also included in that requirement is suggested names for their, for their park spaces?
I don't think, why not? I don't know.
I'll just offer a thought process.
I think, yeah, definitely, Scott, that makes a valid idea, and I think it's one of those things that, it's clear that there are suggested names or potential names that the city could utilize, and that it's clear that the city could ultimately utilize, you know, another name, but it would at least give us a starting point for conversation.
We have veto power. We have veto power.
Well, and, you know, through the process, they would just, you know, recommend a name that would go to the Park Commission, and the Park Commission would, you know, evaluate it, and then if they feel good about it, they'd recommend it to the council, and so they're actually, you know, I guess I do see a method, an objective method to get the name, the name approved. The trouble is to come up with a name is where we're struggling.
Yeah.
Alder Wheeler, go ahead.
Yeah, just want to go back to the renaming of parks. It may be worth it to find out other cities that actually have a procedure for the renaming, because you can get into having to notify family members and other people, because if you don't, and you rename it, I mean, that can be a cause of a lot of problems. And I don't see it in there, so I'm just saying, I know it's discouraging, but just in case it does happen, you know, just a little bit tightened up on what you need to look for.
Well, this is for parks discussion, but also to create, we need to have a form, you know, a formal form, too. And instead of creating that inventory or database for future generation, you know what I mean, like, say why this council came out with this name, you know what I mean? What it was behind, you know? So is it an accessible information?
Yes, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
I also think in terms of getting, if we're, you're interested in soliciting names, I think it's just a matter of getting it out to the public. I mean, I don't think we've ever asked people to submit names, or people don't know that it's an option. I remember even when we named, I believe it was a Chala Drive, a couple of years ago? Two years ago? When we named it, it was named after a family, and I remember at the time, I was like, oh, is there a naming policy? Like, I didn't know either. I just didn't know that was an option, so I think it's something that people would be interested in, you know, like, we're seeking some names, and someone could write a, could be a note in the Pittsburgh Star page.
Well, and certainly, I think, you know, the historian, I really liked the idea of, if we describe an area that we're looking for a name, and hopefully the more senior residents of Pittsburgh would be able to help us to give, you know, to keep the history of the city, you know, there, so that'd be, that'd be good.
Unless there's further discussion, so the recommendation then, Alder Aratafrada, and Scott, to take this back to parks for further, further discussion and possible, some type of resolution, bring forward to council.
And we certainly appreciate your comments, that's for sure. We're looking for ideas.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, I'm going to start to cough. Very good. Thank you very much, Scott. We will move on to the next portion of our agenda, and that is with an update of the town of Madison, and city administrator Chad Breckland will give that update, along with, along with others.
There's a crew.
Yeah, second. So I'll let you introduce who else is going to speak, so the floor is yours, Chad.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. In addition to me doing some presenting this evening on the Town of Madison Attachment Update, Matt Pro, our IT director, will also be sharing some information as part of the slideshow, and then Jeremy Crosby will be doing some presentation on our communications and outreach plan, and we are also joined virtually by Lisa Sanford. She has also been working with Jeremy, and those two have been coordinating our communications and outreach plan. So I'll work my way through the slides, and folks will, obviously, Matt and Jeremy and Lisa will cover particular sections of the presentation, and then by all means, at the end of the presentation, we can open up for conversation, discussion, questions, and so forth. If my slide presentation moves forward. There we go. So the agenda for the presentation here is we'll just talk briefly about these topics, and then, you know, I intend to spend the bulk of the time on discussion and questions. So history and timing of the agreement, Pittsburgh's Town of Madison team, overview of tasks and items to be evaluated in advance of the attachment, ongoing planning efforts, notable informational items at this point for the council, communications and outreach plan, and then again, discussion. So from a history and timing perspective, November 8th, 2002, the Town of Madison Attachment Agreement was signed by the Cities of Madison, the Cities of, City of Pittsburgh, and the Town of Madison. The signatories at the time were Mayor Sue Baumann for Madison, Mayor Mark Vivian for Pittsburgh, and Jim Campbell for the Town of Madison. For those of us who were with the city 20 years ago or so, I don't know as though we thought this was actually ever going to happen, me being one of them, and, or that I would be with the city 20 years later as well. So apparently, I've had enough staying power, for whatever reason, to make it to this point. So on October 31st, at 12:00 midnight, the Town of Madison... So, on October 31st, at 12:00 midnight, the Town of Madison will officially dissolve, and it will attach to the Cities of Madison and Fitchburg. So for informational purposes, about 75% of the Town of Madison will be headed to the City of Madison, and about 25% of the current Town of Madison will be coming into the City of Fitchburg. City of Fitchburg will be gaining approximately 1,400 new residents, 132 acres of land area, about 105 businesses, and approximately $125 million in assessed value as of January 1st, 2021. And then that was further broken out into about $57 million of value within the current Town of Madison Tax Increment District, and $67 million in, outside of TID. And I also want to point out, I emailed this slide presentation to the council as well, so you have, have that available. So, as you will recall, I began the administrator role in mid-July, and in September, we formed our own internal town team. There were several department heads who stepped up, and others, to be our core group of town team members, who are going to really take on the initiative of digging into this attachment, and really, really doing the bulk of the planning efforts and coordinating them. So those team members are Misty Dodge, Amy Mercer, Tracy Oldenburg, Matt Pro, Lisa Sanford, Mike Zimmerman, and Valerie Zisman. So, we are fortunate to have these folks all step up, and it's a good cross-section of the departments, to kind of get a good handle on what all the, the tasks and issues may be, as well as length of service and experience levels within the city. So in regards to the overview of the tasks, what we've done at this, so far to this point, as it relates to that, is we've asked every single department head to identify the tasks, issues, or other questions that they need to have addressed and/or answered in advance of the attachment on October 31st. All departments have provided information, and we've asked them to enter that into, into a site. We're currently sitting at, as of today, 227 task, issues, or other questions have been identified across all of our departments. As you can imagine, it's been a tad bit challenging to identify, and certainly anticipate all of the tasks or issues that need to be resolved, as we're currently sitting here in the council chambers on, on the March 23rd today. And we definitely anticipate that additional tasks and issues and questions will come as we get nearer to the attachment, and certainly even after the attachment, we're expecting that there will be issues, questions, and so forth. So, while our team has done the best that it can, and will continue to do that, we fully anticipate that there will be things that we, we did not identify or could not identify, or they've developed after, after the, the attachment. What I want to do next is turn it over to Matt Pro. Matt has been leading our efforts to use some software applications to identify those, or track those tasks, and he can show you how a couple of departments have entered them, so you can kind of get a good understanding of what those look like. And then there's another software piece that we, we've been able to plot all of these tasks on with due dates and those sorts of things. So Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. There we go. So, as Chad said, we're using a couple of different tools to kind of plot all of these various tasks that we're, we're working on. This is our team site, this is what we developed, you'll see down the left side, all of the, you can kind of see over there on the left side, all of the, the various departments. Each department head or their designee is tasked with entering all of their department tasks and keeping up with this. And so just to give you an idea of what those 227 tasks look like, this is the assessing portion of this. You can see that Amy has, she's organized hers with internal items, external items, and communication items to do. So she has a number of different tasks in here that she's broken down into various different subtasks, and she's applied a, a, a date, a due date for those. Just as another example, if you look at the finance task area. So our finance director's taking a little bit different tactic here, she's got a number of different categories across here, and a number of different tasks inside of there. So every department is responsible for entering their tasks and keeping them up to date, both with these subtasks and the progress they're making. So then in addition to that, we are using a separate tool to essentially collate all of those together and show them all in one screen, so that we can see what this progress looks like. So, these, you can see all of these little diamond shapes, these are all of the tasks plotted along a schedule, but this is the real key screen that we're, we're watching and looking at. So these are each of the tasks across all departments, organized by date, organized by due date. So you can see kind of down the middle which department this is associated with, these are each of the tasks, and then the reason why that one's in red at the top, that's a, that's a due date that has passed. So this is the, this is the way we're keeping track of the 227 tasks at this point. It keeps us on task, and it keeps us kind of in the know here, we know what's coming up sooner, what's coming up later. Now, the, the key to that, and Chad kind of alluded to this already, is this information, a lot of this is still guesswork to a certain extent, you know, some of these due dates, we don't exactly know when they need to get done. We don't know where all the tasks are, in fact, the 227 tasks, it wasn't 227 until Monday, several departments put in additional tasks. So they're still identifying tasks, we're still adding them in, we're adding them to this timeline, and we're, and we're monitoring and watching it carefully. So I will end my sharing, Chad, so you can take back over.
Can I ask a question? In teams, are you using the channels to create those tasks for each department, are you using channels?
So we created one channel. I'm already off the screen there, but we created a Town of Madison channel, and then inside of that, we've got channels for each of the departments, and then we're using actually the planner application to house all the tasks in there. Because in our team site, we also actually have a document library as well, so any of the documentation that's getting created and shared is also housed inside this.
And I guess, so how do you monitor, like, you want to see what are the tasks that we have uncompleted, the ones that they need immediate assistance? Can you print, or do you have a dashboard to take a look at that?
Yeah, so the screen I showed earlier is kind of the, that's the best dashboard we have. The, the struggle is that planning, that planner site that we use, you can't, you can't bring a bunch of different tasks together into one screen, that's the limitation of it, so we had to use a separate piece of software to kind of get that overview, that look of all those tasks. So that one timeline is really the one we're watching, and, you know, we're watching what's floating to the top, what's, what's a missed deadline like that one you saw that was red there. So as we, as we continue along this process, and as department heads continue to update their tasks, that information will shift and change, and we'll be watching. But the other half of that is, yes, we're also watching them drop off and go into the completed bucket, so we know that things are getting accomplished. And, you know, the, the goal here would be on October 30th, we look at that, and there's nothing left. I think that's highly unlikely, but that's the goal.
Have you, have you checked with the, with the people in Madison, what they are doing to track all the tasks? Have we, are doing something similar to what we are doing? Do you, have you, you know, have you, I don't know, I am checking to see we are not reinventing the wheel, and they have a software that they can, you know?
We had a lot of conversations about how we were going to do this. I don't know that anybody checked with Madison, I'm, I'm not sure about that.
We did at least reach out to see how they had their structure created, whether or not they had anybody kind of leading a team, and what we were informed is Madison had elected to allow each department to kind of deal with their own tasks, and there wasn't necessarily a central team or anyone coordinating that, which then led us to believe that there probably was not any sort of collection of, of software that they were, or programs or applications that they were using. So that's when Matt got, got to work and found us in several options.
No, I am fine, for now.
It's back to you, Chad.
Thank you, Matt. Let's see if I can get this to move through, there we go again. So, ongoing planning efforts, so the Fitchburg Town Team, our internal work group, is, we meet actually twice a month, and have been since September, and we will continue to meet twice monthly, and we'll also be looking to bring department heads in, in more widespread format moving forward. The next two large items that this group will be working on is a public information meeting, which obviously Jeremy will be talking about in his portion of the presentation, and also outreach activities in advance of the attachment. So again, Jeremy will cover a large portion of these. These two items will be heavy focus of probably the next three to four meetings of the, the work group, and with the assistance of department heads. Our Fitchburg and Madison City Attorneys have been meeting for quite some time on a regular basis, they've been working through a whole host of legal-related issues regarding the attachment, as well as employment issues associated with the attachment. As you know, in the agreement, the border agreement that was assigned, there is a severance package within there, and obviously, the town has, has had several employees move on to employment within this, within the City of Madison, for instance, as a result of like the fire department dissolving within the town, and beginning to contract with the, with the City of Madison, so. And then the Fitchburg and Madison administrative teams, we've been meeting monthly the last couple of months, that includes finance, legal, and then administrative presence for me. So we've also been looking at, kind of the main issues are related to finance and other administrative-type things, determination of assets and liabilities, the future of the town hall. While we're on the topic of the town hall, where that currently stands now for the, for everyone's information, is there is some environmental issues with the site related to PIFAS. We did anticipate that, it was obviously the site of the former Town Fire Department. So that is currently, that issue is currently under review at the DNR, in regards to what, if any, additional actions are going to need to be taken in regards to that. Once the environmental issue path is charted, we'll be looking to establish a value for the town hall cooperatively with the City of Madison, and then ultimately, this body and staff will work to determine Fitchburg's level of interest in the town hall. As it relates to a distribution of, and assignment of assets and liabilities, right now, staff has internally, between the two cities, been discussing a 75-25 proposed split, which obviously would be subject to both councils' approval. We came up with that in a, in a few different ways, you can see that the assessed value was a factor we used, 72% of the current assessed value is headed to the City of Madison, 28% is headed to the City of Fitchburg. Area, 74% is headed to Madison, 26% to Fitchburg, and population, 77% headed to Madison, 23% to Fitchburg. So it, it really made it, we didn't have to spend a lot of time figuring out the formula, quite honestly, in my opinion. So that's, that's how we've at least reached that, that tentative number. Assessment of facilities, infrastructure, and equipment, we're working on coordinating with the Town of Madison in the next several months to allow both cities' staff to do a walk-through of the town hall, as well as take a look at any of their existing equipment to see what condition it may in, what use it may have for either of the municipalities. We'll also be looking to assess facilities and infrastructure, such as park shelters, roadways, you know, any of those facilities that might be coming into one of the, the cities that we want to be aware of what its condition is, and how soon we may need to put any financial resources into it. We'll try to begin, obviously, some of that, I know actually some of it will happen in advance of the attachment, but obviously we'll begin in earnest after the attachment as well. So once we look to assign specific assets and liabilities, a full inventory and accounting will be necessary in order to, to do more of the financial piece of it, to determine what level of financial assets the town has, and more importantly, what if any, I shouldn't say what if any, it's unlikely they have zero financial liabilities, but what financial liabilities they do have. And that final audit of the Town of Madison is anticipated in the second quarter of 2023, so some questions we ultimately will not have answered until, until that point in time. Other informational items I want everyone to be aware of is ongoing staffing requests. Staff has been very thankful and grateful for the, the 2022 operating budget that was approved by council. There were a, a number of staffing positions within that budget, but there are also, as you all know, were many positions that have been requested that, that remained unfunded, and, and will need consideration in, in the '23 budget, as well as, as beyond that. TID closure and creation, right now, it's the City of Fitchburg's intent to close the existing TID within the Town of Madison as soon as it's feasible, and then also our intent is to request the council to approve the creation of a new TID, once we are able to do so. The reason being for that is that the existing town TID is operated under their principles, which may be different than ours, in so much as the pay-as-you-go formula that we typically use. So therefore, what our intent would be is to, is to do any new further development that would be TID-related under our rules or guidelines or principles, and therefore, in order to do that, we would have to create a Fitchburg TID within, within the new neighborhood. Go ahead.
Regarding the TID, I'm assuming it's not currently locked to the geographical area that we will pick up? Is this above and beyond, or maybe the entire Town of Madison at this point? The one that we're going to close?
So the one that I, that we are going to close is specifically for the Southdale Neighborhood, which is coming into Fitchburg, so that is the area where the Delta Beer Lab is, Exact Sciences Lab, some of the Zimbric dealerships over by Rimrock Road, that, that general vicinity. If you'll recall, years ago, that, that was, it's, it still is now considered a brownfield site, which is why they had created the TID in the first place, and again, one of the reasons why we think we should have a TID there as well, there still are several lots that, that are available there.
Question regarding the TID, how many are left that, that TID has? You know what I mean? Because...
How many that, that we have? Or that the town?
In the town, the, the, the Alexander one, this is, is the Alexander TID, you know? So how many are left to have?
I don't know if there are any, any TIDs north of the Belt Line, we've obviously been...
No, no, but I, the one that we currently, they have, how, you know, when we supposed to close that, when it's the deadline? You know what I mean?
Yeah. The deadline, I think, is 20, I want to say about 2027 or 2028. I know that Misty is, is aware of, of the deadline, but quite honestly, our intent is, once we get a look at all those documents, and ideally that happens in advance of the attachment, we're going to look to close that as quickly as possible. That will obviously allow for a levy adjustment once that's closed, which is going to be significantly needed, so. I can't get any deeper into the finances, because that's over my head.
But I'm guessing because of the language, and their objective may be completely different than what our objective is, as a city.
The town?
Yeah, that's why we would want to close it.
Yeah, 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 we definitely want to get, get our, our, our typical principles within TIDs.
Very good.
So we'll transition to the Communications and Outreach Plan. As I mentioned in the onset, those efforts have been led by Jeremy Crosby and Lisa Sanford, both of them are with us here tonight, and they'll be talking about information related to upcoming public information meeting, a business information meeting, other outreach activities and events, and we are asking that if the council would, would like to provide any feedback regarding the Communications and Outreach Plan, to direct that to me, Lisa, and Jeremy prior to April 5th, please. So, Jeremy, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Chad. So Chad's going to be my clicker here for the night. I'm going to go over the areas, we've broken this down into target audiences, to try to break up and make it easier for us to communicate to everybody, and our goal is to communicate to everybody to the best, the best that we can. So under the homeowners category, we have a welcome wagon folder, which Chad is going to kindly hand around right now, that Lisa put together, which she put together day one, when we came together, this was her project. When we came together, this was her project, and it is an awesome thing that includes all the materials that we want to hand out to the homeowners. It talks about all the services, the things that we expect the homeowners to have questions on is in that folder. Still developing it, but at least you get a kind of a good idea of what that looks like. The welcome wagon idea, again, is just focusing on welcoming you to the city, and without looking at the website, you have all this stuff in your hands, in your possession. Condo and owners, dwellers outreach, we have plans to, again, reach, our original goal was to make sure we talk to every single homeowner individually, make sure we see them one-on-one, and distribute said folder and try to gather questions up. I think a lot of this is going to be feedback, to take their feedback and use that to communicate out new information, because we might not know all the answers or all the questions that they have for us, so we'll use that to our advantage for the communications piece. We'll continue to finish out with any department outreach, and we have that in each category, because as we go along, departments might discover that they have specific things that homeowners need to know right now. Assessing would be the one that would be first and foremost. We know that everybody's going to get reassessed in the town, so they might need some specific moment-notice information that we need to get out to those residents, or specifically to the homeowners, renters, businesses. We want to be prepared for that, so we've identified that as a priority in the task that we'll be doing here. In the renters area, which we think will be the hardest, it has the most, but it's going to be hard to reach everybody because there's just so many of them, and it's hard to go door-to-door. We're going to do our best to do that. Our rollout campaign will include going out and meeting with each of the property owners, managers, try to leave information, posters, handouts to give to new people they're bringing in, to tell them and keep them informed that, hey, if you didn't know, you're going to be part of the City of Pittsburgh. That will move on to, there's one senior living complex there, so we'd like to go out directly to the Novations Commons and talk, set up camp essentially at, they have a community room there, be there onsite with our welcome wagon, if you will, hand out information, collect information, questions. We've talked to department heads, kind of getting them ready to come out with us at these different events onsite when we're there in person, because we want to bring that in-person gesture to these folks. We want to bring the services to them, so that will be done in-person as much as possible. Monthly leisure services outreach, we're talking about holding an event in the park monthly. We've already talked to the library, the rec department, and the senior center, along with, you know, we'll probably talk to Joe back there, who may not know that, but get some apparatus out there. But we want to be out in the park, same deal. We want to be able to reach everybody, but we also want to show off the services that we do have at the same time, as come out to the park, see some of the services that we do have to offer, but also give us a chance to reach people that maybe we didn't see when we were at the apartment complexes or at these specific events. It's just giving another chance to let people know that we're there, we're here for you. We want to make sure to answer your questions. You can call them little mini open houses, little public information meetings, but they are really just to be lighthearted, family-oriented, and have people be able to interact with us. And again, collect information from those folks to turn back into outreach. Businesses will be, it starts with an introduction letter with Mike Zimmerman to get out to all of the businesses. About 105 is what we're looking at for distributing. That will also include a date and a business open house, specifically in the corridor, probably Delta Beer Library looking at, it has the largest event space. I guess there's, probably other places have good event space, but we've checked into that one. But give the chance to have Chad, the mayor, you guys come out there, talk to the businesses, and get their questions and get their information out to them specifically. And then after that, continue to follow up with them, and that'd be done with economic development, and that's part of their task anyways of moving forward. So basically trying to set up that open house, get them the information, get the questions, get them answered, and then continue to move forward from there. Our other category covers a large range, from employees of the Town of Madison, to our employees, to other residents, media, anybody who is interested in this project. We're looking at them and saying, hey, we've got a big thing happening here, we don't want to exclude anybody. And it's kind of our big catch-all, if you will, of getting information out to everybody. So we've got a postcard that I'll be showing you here in just a second that we are ready to send out, that actually has the date of the open house on it. We have our welcome video that we actually filmed today with the mayor, and the mayor was a great sport with three of us, giving him great feedback. He did a great job with that. That will be on the website. We already actually have a landing page on the website that is up currently, so residents of the town can go into a frequently asked questions area and see kind of the basics of what staff have identified as their key question and answers that the residents might have. So a one-stop shop for you, for the residents. We'll continue to update that page, but that's where that welcome video will go. And there is a promo that we shot with Aaron as well, talking about the open house that will be distributed as well here pretty quickly. And then that open house set for April 28th at the Courts Building, Lisa just had sent an email to me earlier, it sounds like we're going to do a site visit and check the space out, so we're excited for that. Again, our goal is to be in the community in that area. Let's make it easy, accessible for everybody to make it out there to that event. Postcard also serves as another way to let people know this is happening, that the date of our open house is on the postcard, which you will see in a second. This is your city. This is the campaign pitch, the marketing idea. Our friend Scott over on the corner here is part of our team. He is the brains behind that great name, whether he likes it or not. And we're using it for our campaign materials. We wanted to find something that kind of, it is a, it's a marketing campaign, so we want to do something that we can work around, a theme, and this is your city is what we've come up with, so it is on our marketing materials. And then at the end of, in approximately September, we're looking at, instead of having another public information meeting, having an open house, we call it a major in-the-park event, but it would be another open house to everybody, businesses, residents, renters, anybody who's interested in learning more. Have all of our departments out there at the park or the green space. We do have a pretty good-sized green space out there to come together and celebrate ahead of the big date on October 31st. And, you know, we're getting close to fall, too, so we might be able to throw some pumpkins in there as well. That would be awesome. But again, we want to be out there in person. And then we'll continue with the social media outreach, any ongoing general outreach as we see. We want to prepare for any negative feedback. We know it's going to come. We want to be able to address that, have a plan to respond. And then again, specific department outreach. The departments are still getting us information, we're still learning what specific items they need to be, need to be communicated out. But in general, we have the general knowledge of what needs to get out there, and we'll continue to do that through these pieces. This isn't limited to that, but that's what we have identified. Taking a look here, and this is, wow, we're really butched badly here. Scott is not going to be happy. Scott did design these. It's not that green, I promise you. So take my word for it, that it says, and I, yeah, that's a bummer. Maybe if you could see it over at Scott's, I will happily show you guys, get you a copy of that, of what that looks like. But the postcard again is ready to go. We're with your guys' approval here moving forward. We'd like to get this out as soon as possible. This postcard is the invite to the open house, and then establishes the communications plan that we have for the residents, what's to come, what's coming up, where they can get that information. And then the next slide has the poster as well, that we'd like to put out as part of our open house event. So those are, when we were talking about getting that to current area, are you excited that it's in Spanish?
I am seeing a very spelling error there.
Hey, that's why we're here to, we are trying to then do multiple languages in these things as well. The postcard, you couldn't see it on there, but there was a Spanish version of the postcard that will be available online as well.
Can you send me the postcard so I can review it?
Yes.
The Spanish, because I can see a big spelling error there, and, you know, so...
You betcha.
Because a native is different, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're working with the staff person internally, but I will happily review, have you review those materials.
Yes, like, you know, if you don't, you know what I mean?
And that was it for me. I'll take questions as they come up.
I just want, I'll just wrap up real quick. Thanks, Jeremy and Lisa. Before we transition to discussion and questions, I do want to reiterate a point. I don't know if I made it fully, but when I was talking about not knowing all the tasks and issues and questions to be answered, we're learning that there's no playbook for two municipalities absorbing one municipality. And in fact, in our conversations with the Department of Administration, they haven't been able to identify a situation like this in the state previously. Any other town dissolutions have been through one to one municipality, not two. So it's definitely a very unique situation, and we're fortunate that we have a great working relationship with both the City of Madison, the Town of Madison, and we've got a great team. You've seen two or three of them here tonight, and listed the others, in addition to other city staff who are actively working on this. So I'm confident while there'll be bumps along the way, I think that we will at least have a relatively smooth landing later this year. So it might be a little turbulence, but anyway, questions, discussion, comments?
Okay, thank you. I think this is a very comprehensive communication, as I was looking at the folder. A big proportion of the people that are moving to the City of Pittsburgh are Spanish-speaking, okay? So I would like to see that most of the information that can be translated into Spanish, the better. You know what I mean? Because I think there's a great flyer there that said, "Welcome to the city," some basic stuff, and it should be at least some of the information, the basic and the most important, if we can translate it in Spanish, I will appreciate that, okay? Also, the same with the video, there should be a video in Spanish, too. You know, with the basic, you know what I mean? Welcoming someone in Spanish, welcoming them, because they are going to feel that, oh, there are more people like us in Pittsburgh, okay? So that one will be great, too. As I mentioned, you know, I, thank you for doing the postcard in Spanish and English, it's great, the poster. One of the other things that you should inform is about, because I receive a request from someone in the Town of Madison asking, what is going to happen with their schools? So people, there is some confusion with the schools, so, you know what I mean? I say nothing is going to come, happen with the school, but if we can also explain that everyone is going to be in the same school district, there's not going to be change in the school, you know? This is a point to clarify, okay? Because I received a question about that.
Julia, that's actually one of our frequently asked questions.
Okay.
And that is actually already on the website, that school districts are going to remain the same.
Okay. The other thing, all the information that we put in that question, how do you call that section?
FAQs?
Yeah. Can you do it in Spanish, too?
The website has a translator. We can't, that is what we're using currently, so that, that's across the whole website spectrum, whether it's right or wrong, you know, but that's the tool we're using currently for that.
Okay, but if I go to now to the website, and if I go to go to the Town of Madison information, where I can see that button that says, you can click there, and it's going to be in Spanish? It's easy access, can people see that? Where is, I don't know? Oh, okay. Okay, so this is the thing that, you know, because we, because if we know that we are expert, and we know you guys are on the website all the time, for you, maybe it's easier to find the stuff, but we need to put in the other people's shoes, that they're going to come to this website for the first time, and this is even difficult for us to find information, we need to put in those people's shoes that how they're going to access the information. So that one is, yeah.
The, on the front page of the website, I have the Town of Madison attachment pinned to the top of the page. That is always the top newsflash there, and you can click on that, and then you will get to the Town of Madison landing page, and that's where you can also get to the frequently asked questions and other information.
Okay, so can I continue?
Well, no, I was going to ask, there are other questions, so can we move around a little bit?
But it's follow-up this part, can I?
How long is your follow-ups? Follow-up on follow-up. All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
This is very important, Randy.
Absolutely. We have other council members who'd like to speak to this as well. We have three or four others, but go ahead, finish up.
I'm going to finish my, because it's related to my first comment, so...
Okay, very good, go ahead.
So Lisa, you know, when you go to the Town of Madison attachment, the first one that is in there, if you can at least, you can say, if you can say something in Spanish there that you can, this information can be also in Spanish, if you click, you know? You know what I mean? If you click, I don't know where they need to click to translate this in Spanish, you know what I mean? So it will be great.
Some sort of tagline that says, if you need this information in Spanish, click here.
Yeah, something like that, it will be great. Thank you.
You had a question? Go ahead.
Just one, you know, I looked through the packet. Is there, do we have one go-to postcard, you know? Police, fire, is there something, a single, single postcard that people will put up on their refrigerator in that package, in that packet, that we would, is there something like in there? That's the most, that's going to be the most important thing. When it's said and done with, they're going to have something on their refrigerator or by their phone with all the, all the numbers and maybe the websites on, so that...
Yeah, so I think that's the goal with the postcard, that we can't tell them to put it on their fridge, but I would hope, you know, our goal is to mail out this postcard to every single resident, business, anybody that we have addressed for in the area, we would send that out to them. And that, the information that's on that card is the information that tells you where to go, the questions, the email, there's an email address on there for sending your questions, and so that, that would be the piece of, that they would have it. As far, and to answer your question about leave behind materials, and I didn't dive too deep into this tonight, but, you know, I think the whole, what you guys saw for that packet is what we established for the homeowners, the renters, we have other materials that are probably more pertinent to the renters than the homeowners. We will offer everybody the same information, but we think the renters might have interest in some other areas. We're working on a brochure right now, that's a part of that, leave behind stuff. And when we're out, no matter where we're out at, and I didn't mention, when we're at the apartment complexes, we'd like to actually set up a table and stay at the apartment, each apartment complex once at least, where we're there outside, or if they have a community space where we can stay there, have our materials with us. So it's not just us saying hi, you know, we want to welcome everybody, but we also want to have a display of information of whatever service, you know, the services that the departments think we need to have and distribute there onsite. So I think they'll have an opportunity to take what they need there, and we'll be able to address, again, we're looking at again as homeowners, renters, businesses. So each one gets, they're getting all the same information, but we have different ways and strategies to try to make sure that the homeowners get the information they need, specifically the renters get the information that's been identified from the departments, from our group and administration that they need. So hopefully that answers that.
It does, Jeremy. One follow-up, if it's okay.
Go ahead.
Have we, are there any homeowners associations or neighborhood associations? Have we identified any leaders down there in that we should, we should know about that you've been interfacing with?
Yep, we've been told there is a neighborhood association down there. There is one condo, or condo association there. We only have one, to my knowledge, we only have one condo, or a couple of condos, I shouldn't say one condo company, if you will, that are there. So yes, we will work on reaching that. Joyce Frye has some great information on that from economic development that she's been sharing with us, so. And we hope to learn more about other groups if we don't know, you know, we can hopefully find them out. And you can send them to us, too. We would love to include them in there.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I have a question, then Jay Allen, and then back to Julia. Thank you very much for that presentation. Excellent job of putting this together, and very impressive. One question that I do have is, since... One question that I do have is, since this town of Madison will be coming over at the end of October, October 31st at midnight, we have a gubernatorial race just a few days later. I'm assuming that the city clerk has been in communication with the town clerk and, not just a matter of communication and where they're going to vote, but that, those logistics of voter ID and all of that is going to be cared for. I'm sure it is, but if, if you could just give me that reassurance. And I'll direct that to Chad.
Yes, we are aware that there is an election soon after the attachment. Unfortunately, I don't know if that was accounted for 20 years ago, that a couple of days after the attachment, we would then be having an election of notable statewide significance. So, that is certainly one of those, probably several of those tasks that are listed in the clerk's department are in advance of that upcoming election. And I know that they're already planning for doing several bits of information and steps can begin to be taken in August. That's kind of the kickoff point where the clerk's office is able to do a number of things as it relates to preparing for the fall election.
Good, very good, thank you.
And if I can just add, that's also been a question that has come up from a couple of the town of Madison residents, so that's also out on our frequently asked questions page. And the clerk's department is gonna be sending out a postcard in August to the town of Madison residents.
Okay, very good, thank you, Lisa. Alder Allen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things about this. One of them is, as far as the Spanish versions of whatever we're sending out, I agree with Julia that that's very important. And I know that we have a couple of staff members who speak Spanish, who can probably review some of this stuff before we send it out. But I also know that Centro Hispano has translated things for the city of Pittsburgh past, and I suspect they'd be willing to do that again. I think we should reach out to them, because I'm sure they have, they have a significant presence in that neighborhood right now. Also, I don't know if we've reached out to the other social organizations that are working there, like JFF and some of the others, so that they can, so that we can work with them on helping these residents. Because the people who work for those organizations are going to have a lot more direct contact with the residents than any of us have so far. And then one other comment I wanted to make is that whatever we're putting together for the renters, we should be sure that we kind of lay out what the Pittsburgh rent abatement process is, because our process is a little different than the process in the city of Madison, and they should be aware of how to go about that if, you know, they have a need that's not being addressed by the landlord. That was all I had right now.
Thank you. Alder Rodafrada, go ahead.
The other question that I have is for the April 28th meeting, I think you also need to be consider to hire some translators in case that, the people that, also the people go there that they don't know how to, you know, don't feel comfortable speaking in English, even though sometimes they understand, but they don't feel comfortable asking question. As we have done in the past in the city of Pittsburgh, we have done event with the police. In Leopoli School, we brought translator, you remember Chad? Yeah, so I think it will be a good idea. And also, as Jay Allen mentioned, there is a group of social workers working in that area, because I was, I was, I wanna send you the email, because they reached out to me and Joe Maldonado about the school and what is gonna happen with the town of Madison, and they would like to work with the city. So, I will send you those contacts, they are social worker, workers, they are working in those area, okay? So, remind me that I need to send you that email, because, so that's it for now. And then Gabrielle's gonna.
Yes, you have the floor, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge, thank you so much for this presentation, very detailed. It was really nice to give a lot of insight into the work that you've been doing, so we really appreciate. I, I'm sure I can speak for everyone, we really appreciate the detail. And I'm really pleased about the communications plan. Obviously, there were some suggestions, but I think what you, what you've put together is really strong. I'm really excited that there's gonna be some events and try to make it a little bit fun, too, to get people out. I'm just, I acknowledge you for doing some great work, so thank you. And then one note is that I talked a little bit with Andrew McFadden, the town of Madison is affected by the metro redesign somewhat significantly. And we've been talking about maybe having an outreach meeting in advance of the annexation in a similar, we're doing, we're having meetings in other areas of town besides City Hall. But at some point, we will need to do, because the effects, the changes will go into effect mid-2023, so we will really need to have at least one, like intentional outreach meeting to let them know about the changes. I guess that's the main thing I wanted to say. And I, and I'm also happy to help in any way that I can as well. If you need a volunteer to help knock doors or sit at a table, I'm happy to help if I'm available, so you can feel free to reach out to me.
Actually, that's a good point. You know, we are anticipating asking all staff, we've been calling and telling the department heads to be ready to help us out, but, you know, any of you guys are welcome to join us out there on the road. We'll get you the dates and, you know, try to keep that information up, because we want to have as many people out at the events as possible helping us. We want to have somebody that can translate when we're out doing a lot, especially in-person events, you know? So, whatever services, people you know, you know, pass them our way, and our group will add them to the list and, you know, make sure to get them on the list, get them the dates of the events, when we're gonna be out there. And, you know, I think the Alders would be especially important if they're out there. I think that would be a great show force of our city being out there, same with city staff.
And we've talked about having, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
We've talked about having the neighborhood navigator with us when we're onsite at the apartment complexes, and also Carla from the clerk's department, who speaks Spanish as well, so we have taken that into consideration.
Thank you, Lisa. Yes, Alder Rodafrada, go ahead.
Two other thing, one is also the, how is gonna be the Pittsburgh Star distribution in that new area? I don't know if the city is talking to the Pittsburgh.
I'm confident that's on the task list.
Okay, okay. And then my other question, Chad, is where the people from the town of Madison will vote on November? In which polling station?
Tracy had talked about that last night, that we're already in search of locations that might be suitable in the Southdale neighborhood. Potentially as a default, de facto backup would be Fire Station 3 on Cyan Road. But I know that we have at least a couple of ideas that, that are directly within the Southdale neighborhood that Tracy's gonna take a look at in the next couple of months here.
Thank you.
Additional questions, discussion?
Julia, a question for you in regards to the putting some of the materials in Spanish. Would you be able to identify kind of which ones we should prioritize, knowing that we won't be able to do all of them?
Yeah.
But if there are some that you'd like us to prioritize, just let us know.
And also the, another question, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
So, the other thing is that I remember the senior center, we didn't approve last year's, someone doing translation from, for the senior center, you remember that?
Yeah, that's the language, language line, like it's a call-in language.
Oh, that one's a call-in, okay, different, okay, okay.
All right. Additional questions, discussion? Harry Nun, thank you. Excellent presentation, very informative, and look forward to the listening session. If there are, if there's nothing else, on to item seven, announcements. The next committee of the whole meeting is April 27th, 2022. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Herbst, seconded by Alder Gerhart. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries, we are adjourned at seven, or excuse me, 8:19 PM, thank you.